Welcome everyone. The Board of Education, Education Director's schedule meeting February 25th, 2019, 13:00 AM, at Betsy Lane High School. I'd like for the road call to show that all school board members are present except for Miss Gierhart, who recently had knee replacement surgery, so we keep her in our conference area for people to refer to. Next is to review the goals of the 400th School Board. In speed of five stars school district, transition rate of 80%, to remain physically solvent and efficient, that have an average ACT of 19.5 and achievement rate of 95.52, and its safe vulnerability to this field to be used. Next is a reminder for request to speak. We have a clipboard on table one in front of us, that if you wish to address the board, please sign up with your name and your address. Our practice is that you have five minutes to address the board, and if there's anything that we need to respond to, we will respond to you within five days of en writing. Next is a non-protective moment, including silence and a reflection of why we're here. Thank you. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, I have one item I'd like to add as Adam P., and it is considered to approve the contract that the Education Center would use this facility to the boys' and girls' gift exchange program. That would be Adam P. on the agenda.
I need a motion to approve or to add Adam P. to the agenda.
I'd like the motion.
Do you can make the motion? I need a second. Second is for order. If you oppose, Adam P. is added to the agenda. Next is follow-up students back from the teachers for core student work. First would be Pam Cawth.
Good evening. Tonight we want to recognize some students and some staff and a thought community group, but I don't think they're going to make it tonight. We're going to start off with our high school students who are advancing to the state governors cup competition. We have four this year. This is the highest number that we have had go to state since 2002. So, yeah, everybody should be here. First off, in social studies, Kristen Craig from Floyd Central High School plays fifth. And in language arts, from Floyd Central also, Lindsey Cottle plays fourth. And arts and humanities, Kate Scott plays fifth. He's from Floyd Central High School. And in composition, from Prestonburg High School, Tabitha Mitchell plays second. I believe, guys, correct me if I'm wrong, I think all four of you have been to state before, correct? In the high school or middle school, so these are some returning champs, and we have some high expectations for state competition.
We also want to thank Coach Brent Hodgins for coming tonight and supporting his academic
Next, we have five students who were not selected for the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Program. This is a program for sophomores, and it focuses on helping students develop leadership skills. It wants to help them lead and to better serve their own communities, and at the same time they get to experience a little bit of life on college campus. This year, this group will go to Berea. We have five, but we only have three who could be here tonight. First, from Betsy Lane High School, Coranda Newton. And just so you know, Coranda has also been an academic team student for years. From Floyd Central, we have three. One cannot be here tonight, as she's getting ready for the basketball game tomorrow night, but I do want to announce Ms. Katie Moore from Floyd Central High School. And then the next two from Floyd Central, we're just up there, we have Lindsey Cottle We have also one from Prestonburg High School, but she cannot be here tonight, that is Ms. Now we're going to talk about one of the most amazing groups we have here in our school system, and that is our early childhood team. These ladies have a job that is very challenging, and every time I see them, they're always smiling. They have a goal of having 90% of their students being kindergarten ready. And if you've ever been in a Head Start room with a bunch of three and four-year-olds, it's pretty impressive what they can get these kids to do. They have exceeded their goal, and we're going to start with some of the classrooms that have gotten, 100% of their students are ready. So tonight, let's recognize from Betsy Lane Elementary, and what we would like is for you to stay up here, please, Ms. April Barowski and Brittany Tackett. Also from Betsy Lane is Carleen Johnson, executive tech. As they're coming. We also have a team from John and Stumbo Elementary, with 100% of their students who were kindergarten ready. From Prestonburg Elementary, Brittany Maynard and Amanda Calhoun. Next up, we have three different classrooms from South Floyd Elementary that all had 100% of their students kindergarten ready. First is Debbie Gibson and Amanda Burke. Next is Connie Hall and Anastasia Kowler. And next is Tammy Gierhart and Misty Daniels. We have three more classrooms that exceeded that 90% goal, and any time we have people who exceed goals, we think we should recognize them. For from Dayton Elementary, we have Misty Howe and Stacy Payne. They had a 92% rate of students being ready for kindergartens. This next class also had 92% from Prestonburg Elementary, Barb Davis and Deidre Johnson. Barb Harris, I'm sorry. And from South Floyd Elementary with a 90% rate is Ms. Liz Ozick and Christina Flannery. Now while they're trying to get situated for a picture here, there's still a little bit more. In the state of Kentucky, about 50% of the kids are ready for kindergarten when they start, but in Floyd County, that number is 64.2%. And about 50% of the kids who exit the preschool that's funded are ready for kindergarten, but if you're in that funded preschool in Floyd County, it's 86.2%. Also from Head Starts around the state, the average is 50% are ready for kindergarten, but in Floyd County, which is also the highest in the state, the rate is 90.9%. So we would like to ask all the other Head Start ladies to please come up here and join us, because this early childhood staff is absolutely amazing, and we have a banner that we want to hang at central office, bragging on our early childhood staff. And then I believe, Mr. Atkins has a little surprise.
They actually don't get any money from our school system. So, in appreciation of what they do to give our kids such a great Head Start, and I know this seems like a very little amount of money to you, but they're going to be really excited about it, because how many pairs of scissors can you buy? How many breads can you buy with $5,000? We're going to give each classroom a $5,000 PL.
Alright, everybody take your place, make sure you got the right percentage, because they kind of went on, so just make sure that you got the right percentage, working out of my notes, so that's really important. Okay? Is that it? Yep.
We received this last month, and we mentioned our, uh, card, but it says, "Congratulations for 2018, your professional development resulted in a successful completion of Level 1 in the KSE Cognitively Set, I am closing your official certificate to recognize your
Thank you, Mr. Atkins, that was such a big surprise. Next, we'd like to have a report on student work by Betsy Lane High School Principal Do you need any interraks?
Okay, I'm going to make a copy of this. Third of demographic page, see that enrollment attendance, maybe not the middle part of those who are first place, attend these classes for the last 10 years in a row. We feel pretty good attendance, and this holiday, we can take this stuff, I'll add it on the page. Permission to visit sites, what permission of Betsy Lane is to educate students to be highly successful in life. Our vision statement, of course, we all try to create a learning environment, we need to be proud and confident of our school, and we come on our best and achieve total Accidental goals, 2019, bunch of rich proficiency levels, math grade of 15%, of course, we use data, always look at data for anything we can, try to see our weaknesses, try to make schedule changes, we've done a new plan this year, our scheduling is different, hoping that will help us, and we're trying to utilize the certain software a little bit more this year, and we get impacts. Of course, GAAT, consent, immediate faculty know we've identified our students who need additional help. We do strategies classes and middle-known classes, if they don't reach the benchmark, they take additional math reading classes. It's not a substitute, it's addition, they take the regular reading and the regular math anyway, and they just take an additional to work on basic skills. And of course, we do ESS on Tuesday evenings, try to try that as well. Student growth, of course, we're always trying to raise your transition rate, and we do ACT rotation class up here, and then of course, we try to use ACT material in question in our classrooms, try to boost our ACT scores and all that. Transition rating, this is something we do to try to give our transition mark, students have access to the ASVs exam, the G-Matrix software, purchase that, the MOSS exams, we ban an additional computer science course, and we have one student going to the golf court facility this year, and career barriers, and there must probably represent it, because they come and speak to our children over here. Graduation rate, of course, we monitor the whole year long, and make sure our students are on track to graduate. Right now, we're at 97%, 97.72% last year. You, you have to do the graduation rate. But we track them and meet with, meet with the kids, some parents sometimes, they're not on track, and use RLC, of course, and make up any. A few minute opportunity, I don't think you can see that from here, some pictures, oh, Mary, Kelly Avery, who's on the finals for future year. The portrait out loud, something we do here, we have a picture of that, of course, we're cheerleaders in this state this year, and we're very proud of cheerleaders, that we want to make in that category. A Christmas dinner we have every year, and a little picture over there, we love that, a little Christmas dinner for our students, and then anybody that helps our school, invite them as well. I pay for that a little, just to show appreciation of anybody that helps us. Literacy, of course, we, we have a Strive with Reader Grant this year, and we're doing book clubs, small group workshops, library booths, we were all for a library, we had a Polar Express night around Christmas, it was wonderful, and a lot of kids did it, I guess it was an awesome experience, that, that worked with that for us. My understanding, we do a weekly night too. See the professors, the intervention project, and we've got people on the training, paid up here. We're doing world, world wall, and we're worth licensed magazines in the multiple classrooms, try to get more reading involved, and we're going to start. There's some strengths, get to build more vocabulary, reading in the classrooms, silence style reading, the teachers need different strategies, we can teach teachers, try to teach some of our other four areas, some reading strategy. And some needs, just a couple of needs that are needed for students to use the ESS, or we have it every Tuesday evening, we push a number later, for identifying the children actually send them, not send them later home to the parents, we're hopefully pushing the ESS, is your safety. Just a few more things, like this hall here, we have a picture on the top left, that's the mom and Miss Kelly's place, and kids love that trick, they can say more about it, they can go more about it, kids love it, they love what they were today. And we had the drum drive and presentation here, where they drove go, go cars, tricycles, that was a very good program, and of course, our picture for active. A few other portrait out loud, of course, we dedicated, Mrs. Newton, dedicated to him that he's set down for this year. And top rack corner was, we did a couple things around, to our feeder programs, down at Betsy Lane Grace School, with Senator Drew and John M., and give up candy to our feeder programs. Then our Kentucky Studies trip, first into the second week of portrait out loud, we come up with support for our competition, which is awesome, if you ever get a chance to come on. Kids getting them reading, the two points please in front of our student body, we have the kids on the way all great, and all the kids watch them, it's a good opportunity to hear the kids do poetry, and a good opportunity to see 400 kids watch them, and allow them to do that.
Does it feel confident?
Yes, yeah. Some people do that in front of maybe a classroom, in front of the whole student body, and I think that helps. Nothing that helps. We've actually had burners, they have, like, a top five, uh, study.
I think you're in the uncut school, though, isn't it? No, I'm not.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
And it's pretty much like, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, it's like a stairs, uh, we keep, uh, it's like, uh, kind of installation, it's like a cave, it's a fun house, uh, and the broiler, to let the girls, uh, and, and it's like, you know, it's like, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, like, uh, uh...
We actually discussed with Kay, that they, uh, do what is required, uh, back in the school, so, uh, there's, uh, quite a lot actually.
It's, it's a lot of something we really think it's fun to do, and we got some, a couple of strong records, right? We were, uh, we've got the records, and, uh, some studies, uh, that they're actually going through down now, and we're looking, we're going to, we want to take them to, uh, for, for, but it's not, that, that never seen it. It's, it's amazing, wow.
It's mind-blowing, and Caveback is just, uh, amazing, thundering source that we, it's not even really being able to utilize to its fullest potential. So, um, I know with our, um, IT, the, the, the size of she is, so excited about trying to get everybody, you know, in touch with everything that Caveback has to offer us. I mean, she's really certain, really been in there to see what all we can, what all we can do, so, use them as much as possible.
I've got, I've got just a couple of things, nobody else has a question? Have you got one?
It's really extraordinary, it's just forgettable.
You guys did a great job, I know that you used the poetry out loud selfie. Uh, be sure to remind the cheerleaders, I'll be here on Wednesday, and kind of, I'll be here on Wednesday for their championship selfie. Uh, Dr. Carter had become the bull, and I, I ran out and forgot to get it, so, uh, that didn't say, let them know I'll be here Wednesday for that. Also, the poetry out loud, imagine this, this whole science school kids, nine through 12 graders, there's never called out, there's never a laugh, it is so supportive, these students are so supportive of that program, it just amazed me, because I have to say properly, as a nine through 12 grader, I would probably have wanted to have called me earlier. So I could, I mean, it's just amazing, you guys did a great job. The last question, this is the question I have, do you believe the RLC helps the regulation?
Yes.
I think so, and I told somebody else I was gonna be a burden myself by asking.
I would not be that honest, and it is, you know, we, we try to, you know, we see, you know, our, our, uh, products, we, we help recent kids, recognize, uh, school, uh, to be in regulation, so, we didn't have that, I, I regret to like, regret, uh, for, for this program.
And then again, I want to say, glad to see you having a point taken advantage of the job corps, we're gonna offer more opportunities, we have to run buses to the job corps, since it's a can ride, we're gonna do that, we'll get enough kids tomorrow, but it's a good opportunity, they walk out in a place to end a job, but they finish.
I have a question, your special answers 21 percent. Do you go ahead with that, it's gone up this year, or it has gone down this year? What? It's not the same, it hasn't really changed from last year to this year?
Okay. Okay. All right. All right. Is anybody outside of questions?
I would ordinarily have some, but I have a birthday invite.
You have the option to say your name, once they're cut with.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Community Commons, the Board of Education, and First Amendment, Angela Coleman for the SCDH. Welcome, Angela.
Good evening. First, I'll start with my questions before I get into anything, uh, many members have reached out to me about the flu, uh, where we were all, of course, considered a sacred epidemic, if any of those days would be forgiven.
I have spoken to a couple of legislators while I was in Wolf, and I put that vote there.
Okay.
Uh, I think legislation has to be fast to take care of, and I think we know that, and we want to stay light in the evening, and I'm hoping that along with the other announced, uh, the state emergency, the day to day.
That was my second question, but that...
And I'm hoping we might get a little recreation, so...
Okay.
We will see, I'm sure about that.
Okay, thank you, that's the question, several people have sent me with emails this weekend about it.
Sure.
Uh, February, our meeting that is conducted this past Wednesday, schools represented were DICE, Betsy Lane Elementary, Betsy Lane High School, Princetonburg Elementary. Your still our goal to approve, we were involved, all of you are invited to our meeting, all of you behind me, and we're, take these invited every, um, third Wednesday a month at 4:30, unless schools cancel or something, please come out and join us for a meeting.
As a former association president, that's the hardest thing I've been able to do, we have a good membership number, but it's actively involved, that's the issue here, so...
Thank you.
So, 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 I feel what you're saying, that you have the issue with that.
Okay, uh, next, uh, thank you again, this Thursday's ECA Day of Learning, and there's a group of us are traveling to Frankfurt, uh, to be with Mr. Turner, and representing Blackberry on Thursday, and we have more meetings on Friday to try to find out more about, I think we all just been presented, and thank you for that opportunity, we really appreciate it.
Excellent, awesome, you guys reiterate about the flu days, the Monday.
Oh, I will, I will.
You get a chance to talk about the flu, uh, Senator Carter, I'm sure you're invited, sure.
And last but not least, um, again, more events tonight, why, why, any teachers deserve a raise, all these accomplishments of these students, it's wonderful, teachers, the parents, teachers deserve a raise in Ford County, and I know, if you can make it done, you'll do it, and I've got five, any of you that's classified first semester, certified second semester?
Absolutely, we're looking, and I will, I will be able to pay this, and it will take us to, probably to, in the May, I promise you, I'm looking at what I need to do then, uh, and some of those meetings for tomorrow.
All right, thank you, good evening, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary.
Mary, why don't you tell me all this outside of the night?
I've taken a few loans, I wonder, but, um, actually, I was here for one reason, and discovered another one when I got here, and the first reason is, is that I do have something that's on the agenda for the approval list, and that is the tree that you brought, so it's going to be had on the 21st of March, and I just wanted to thank you all, Fettle Free, and for supporting the efforts of Ford Central, or we call ourselves the Heart Builders, and I would like to personally invite any of you all, and we will be in the portal on Monday with Chantico Mexico at 10 o'clock, and we're gonna, uh, actually be in the portal with some middle school students, or, uh, actually, they're fifth graders, and they're doing sculptures, and it's a word that I cannot pronounce because it's in Spanish, and my students are actually going to create poetry that's based on that, and then, on the next day, we're gonna have the Spanish three students go to the portal with the same students, they're gonna construct poetry in Spanish. So, and I also want to take this time again to offer full use to anybody in Ford County, any school in Ford County that is interested in connecting with a, a great living in Chantico Mexico, or with some high school students at Bronx. I also found out that we do have several countries, I've not been told what they are yet, through shared studios, the company that has given us the portal, that we are gonna be open to several other countries.
Awesome.
In the near future.
That's wonderful.
And the other thing that I'd like to share is on April the ninth, at the Hymn Center School, we are gonna be having, and that's our day today, we're gonna be narrative four, and I will actually be doing the, the training, we're doing narrative four facilitator training. Now, last month, or, or actually, the earlier part of this month, Melissa Collins was training, she is at Ford Central also, so now she's on the facilitation list, but I would like to extend, uh, just a, a greeting, a welcome to every school in Ford County, if they can send at least, you know, one teacher, one each one of the high school, one from, you know, each school, one, one teacher, so that we can get, at, at least every school in this county will have a narrative four training facilitator, so they can actually start having that in their school. Our goal is that we want to have a narrative four sale, which makes it sound like we're in a, at the time, in every high school, beginning next year, and then from there, let those high schools go into their middle schools, and let those middle schools go with those elementary schools. And I just want to thank you all again, for your continued support of this program, and if you have, and I'll come in you all for the same cause, in June, you know, we had the International Summit, and I was able to recommend more people, which I recommend a lot. Don't go home here, but, um, I do hope to become an accident for approval to the same people to do the work, so, is there any questions?
Thank you.
I just want to say, I'm happy for the board, thank you for being so innovative and energetic, and trying to get this narrative four program, um, it's just amazing, and thank you for watching.
Yes, lines is clear.
I would also like to thank you, you may want to back, extend the case, it's late, back up to this man, come up, and, uh, story, ask, is that all that's certain down, you need to check it out?
You come right on, you talk? All right, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Wow, just little of your formula, you did it. You said a lot. I'm all for you, you don't know. All right, it's going down the list for clients who board these students that wish their rights to board, parents, PTA, PTO, Sabbath Councils, certified employees, certified employees, SCDH, Principal Association, members of the Board of Education, anybody that needs anything to say? I'd like to say, uh, welcome back to Dr. Andrew, who has been gone for the last month, so, very glad that she was home, and she was well done.
We're all very glad to see her, uh, her statement she got down Friday.
Yes.
We're very glad to see her.
And any other public comments that I might have skipped over? All right, next, action is number four, action special reports, receive assistance, claim, Roman, and help aid service report. Anybody have some comments or questions regarding four A? I need a motion to receive approved report.
I'd like the motion.
I need a second. Change of second, I need, any opposed? Move?
I will say that, uh, our health coordinator told us that this is the week prior to, uh, us being out all last week with the flu, uh, the week prior to, our health assistance saw 973 students, uh, which we normally send home 3% to 4%, this time we have to send home 15%. So, the numbers were greatly growing, as we looked into clinics, pharmacies, health department, everyone running out of pan of flu, clinics backed out the door, so we have, we also have that here in Ford County, so I'm hoping tomorrow we'll see an increase in attendance.
Uh, next is, received athletic academic and attendance report, um, I've commented on that last month, I had asked to see exactly what every school had sent in for this report, and the report did not have that, it only listed maybe four, four class schools, and so, uh, next member, can I see?
Can I, can I, can I, can I, yes? What I, what I suppose you got, all people sent to us, like, not anything, like, that is, there's not, um, everyone's, uh, Miss Reddick, uh, typically, uh, has, uh, that was too, too long, as an example, and...
Okay, good. I need a motion to receive the athletic and academic attendance report. Ron, I need a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second by junior, any opposed? Motion passed. Next is file A, receiving a report from Superintendent, Mr. Reddick.
As I said, we have a busy week this week, after the, or this month's busy month, because of the flu, and because of weather, we, we've been out several days, uh, probably that's the second week of February, we thought, you know, we hit the home stretch, you know, we're gonna get around all the weather, and we ended up having a little bit of this, a little bit of that, and the flu gets us, and, you know, just several different issues have happened this month, but, uh, we are, we are in the process of getting back to business as usual tomorrow, and, uh, certainly hoping to see an increase in attendance, but, but saying, we've had a lot of athletes go on, so many things, if I were to sit here and tell you, I think, I don't know if I had it all in the written report or not, and, uh, so many things I've been right up this, and I will say that, uh, we have, um, Ford Central's ladies and boys, one of the districts in Martin County, uh, like Commander Mr. Robbie Fletcher, Dr. Robbie Fletcher, now, very good, great job hosting that, uh, the only bad thing I can say about it is it's a long way down the road, so, outside of that, uh, we have the turnout, so we did a great job hosting the turn, and actually, right now, we have press for a play up at the Expo Center right now, where Johnson said, which is one of the top teams in the region, and I have gotten a few reports, it's, it's not going real well for us, so, but, but that would be my, that's my, my report, a lot of that's in, in the written.
Do you want to go ahead and make your...
I will, um, quick.
State of the city, it was leadership, A, understanding the political system, B, understanding communicating proposal legislation, C, applies laws, policies, and procedures with intelligence, D, utilizing the legal system, and E, provides input on critical educational issues. Standard A, understands the political system, um, and, and nothing else, a little bit of conversation we've held tonight, and related to some of that, this is actually, um, Mr. Sharon Oxon, and Mr. Junior Newt, we, Junior Dixon, and myself, that's in Washington DC, in Commerce and Rogers Office, and at that point, we had an opportunity to speak to him about several things, uh, as far as IDA, DNA funding, but also about our new facility that we can't get water to, so, we had a really good conversation with him, and he actually called the guy that was in charge, so we had a really good conversation with that, so as far as understanding the, uh, political system, this is a slide that I would say demonstrates our new...
And I'd like to say, since we spoke to him, thanks have been given a lot of...
Well, that, in fact, the newspaper, YNT, and Lexis, and Harold, and everyone's picked up on his way, I think it started with the annexations, when they found out we couldn't get the water up there, then it kind of blew up, so, yeah, it has picked up, we, we've actually got the report back from, uh, the Board of Engineers, tells us they have a plan in place, and we should be in my office, which is really, really good news. Or B, understands and communicates proposal legislation, this is actually an invitation that I received to have, uh, dinner with the, the Republican leaders, the Senate Republican leaders, now, this wasn't just for me, this was for the LSAT meeting, which I sat on, and, uh, through those conversations, uh, we talked about the, the bill that was, um, that was up. leaders. Now, this wasn't just for me. This was for the LSAT committee, which I sat on. And, uh, through those conversations, uh, we talked about the, the bill that was, um, that was up, about selecting presidents, superintendent electors. We also talked about the tribunal bill and the SPD bill. So, there was a lot of conversation around that. And that's what this letter was the invitation to myself and I said every member on the LSAT committee together. C, applies laws, policies, and procedures with intelligence. This was a, a meeting I had with Inspector Scat. She actually asked me about some employees that had been hired as bus drivers who had been retired teachers. Well, unless they had classified experience, that experience did not follow me. It had to be classified. Their certified experience did not follow me. So, that was again, going along with our laws. And actually, we have the contract we had with KEA for our bus drivers and our classifieds. So, we were following policy and procedures and doing it in a manner that we can sit down, have a really good conversation. I think Becky would tell you I had a really good relationship with her and I brought that little big pocket. I worked with her closely at that. D, is utilizing the legal system. This is, you can't tell much about it. These are talking points for me. When I sent my catch on project, um, to Jared Lane, she said, some of it you can't see. And I said, well, there's talking points for me. This is actually the email from our attorney, Dr. Earl Hunt, where we had completed the deed on some properties, surplus properties and stuff. And that was from back in September, maybe June or July, it was early on, but it was something, yeah, something that I had on, that that is a, just a snippet of the email stating that the deed was completed or ready to be signed, which again leads to utilizing the legal system. Provides input on critical educational issues. This is actually the letter telling me that I had been selected to sit on the LSAT committee. Now, the LSAT committee is a local superintendent advisory council. That gives me about every month and a half, I said. Every, every month and a half or two months, I get an opportunity to sit down with the commissioner. And we go through hot button legal issues. And we actually had an opportunity to have a discussion for approve or not approve some of the things that come to the table. Uh, the first one I sat on was, uh, the discussion about the new graduation requirement of a, a minimum skills basic test. You'd have to pass graduate. And of course, I knew, so I just didn't listen for two and a half hours, which they only usually last two and a half hours. But that one was taken up by that discussion. That's how hot of a topic that was with superintendent's prosecution statement. So, that gives me an opportunity again to provide input on critical educational issues. Thank you.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Attucks? Other than I think he's doing a basic job. Um, I need a, a motion to receive five A and B. Dr. Tanner, Dana, both made a motion. So, we have a first and a second. Any opposed? Motion pass. I need a motion to receive utility report for Bexleyne High School.
I make the motion.
Junior makes a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Run a second and it toes. Motion pass. Proceed attendance audit report.
I would like to say just a little something on that. Uh, we had a really, really, really good attendance audit. And I had told you guys that earlier. We, we officially received it now. I think we had just a couple of small issues such as not sending home, was it, uh, notice, notice suspension. I think it was just very minor things that were really, really easy cleanup. It was, it was amazing. And that, that says a lot about what Ms. Christina Springer, DDP does, Ms. Fawnita Compton, and, and all of our attendance parks, our schools. Several of those ladies are new. So, they've done a really, really big job of that. And that just makes our day that much easier knowing to take, take care of that. We don't have any concerns.
I just wanted to make sure that in the spring, if he comes back and, and does the, the checks and make sure that the correct directions of the policies that we have, that we're also. Alright, I need a motion to receive the attendance audit report. That, Junior makes a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Do you have a question? Move, move back closer. Make sure it's on.
I know. I, I was thinking, yeah, I miss all the snow, the weather, whatever it is, do the proof. Uh, I really like attendance, we need more attendance. Even here, see, we were raining, we were snow, we miss the school. But when we look great, we steal our attendance. Last year is lower than we had before. Uh, see, there are four things that we, we still have a good attendance. One, if kid doesn't come to school, they're vulnerable. If they don't come to school, sometimes they're hungry, but they never forget. And third, a sick bunny. Money is very, very, I don't know, it would feel like a bunny is so important for the school. You know, we talked about five thousand of a grant is so important. If this was paid in the school, you know how much money you lose. Because like one person keep missing the school, we do like hundred thousand more, but just one person missing. So, we need to draw more attention to the attendance this way. So, I don't know what we plan this year, or I like to do something about it.
We've got a couple of contests, um, beyond the bicycles. We are, we're making the calls. We've reiterated that, that has, those calls have to be made by administrators is what. It's not just being done by secretary. The administrators are making those calls on citizens. We are, we are, we are working, a work in progress right now.
I know. We have a previous dive, we have snow, and we were raining. Why? Without that, we are a competitor in North Dakota.
Any opposed? Five D passes. I need a motion for five E, considering recruitment to the court for Bexleyne High School project.
Make the motion.
Junior makes a motion. I need a second. On second, any opposed? Motion pass. Five F, considering approval for those change orders to replace main high school project. I need a motion to approve.
Make the motion.
I need a second. Second, Dr. Tanner, Mr. Attucks.
And these change orders are all credits back to us. That's what they are. It's, uh, and I think they total probably three thousand dollars for this credit for things that as we close out certain aspects of the project, monies that were expended.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Five G, anybody here to do a picture or a manager, art day progress report?
I just checked.
So, next is act of consent. I need everyone to check A through P to see if they have anything that needs to be pulled to discuss. The one thing that, um, I would like to have, I wish Mary had left, is because once, um, our, our students get back from the Bronx, I'd kind of like to have them at a format so we can hear our. Yeah, I would love for the people to have to tell us what they have to experience. Yes, ma'am. There is one I want. So, you can let Mary know tomorrow that, that I want y'all to kind of talk to us when we get back. So, we, so we know what you all have to see, what you have experienced, what you have to do. Okay, if I have anything else? On N, for the Southwood, um, elementary school, is it track by Council?
Yes.
On Southwood?
I guess they come across the hill. And, uh, with, with all the news.
That's not supposed to go over there.
They've got separate engines along there and they got their systems going out. I was.
I just wondered.
I was assuming they come across the hill. I just want to ask.
Okay.
Again, that, that's the one I asked.
Okay. It just seems so hard.
You've been.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Anybody else have anything? I need a motion to approve A through P.
Make the motion.
I need a second. On, on second, any opposed? A through P passes. Next is seven, executive session. I have told that we do not need, we do not need an executive session. So, I need a motion to adjourn. Ron makes a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Do you have seconds? Any opposed? Motion pass. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.